The balance of the whole meeting.
Good evening, everyone. It is June twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, seven thirty P M. Thank you for joining us for the City of Sunbury Council Meeting. Please join me in a moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the vision of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and no else.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Saint John?
Here.
Mister Capel?
Here.
Mr. Dreher?
Here.
Mister Ghost?
Here.
Grumney?
Here.
Mrs. Cooper?
Here.
And Mister Martin is absent, six present. We have four of them.
Thank you. Are we at a meeting on June fourth, twenty twenty five, looking for a motion to approve?
Submove.
Got a motion by Mister Capel?
Second.
Second by Miss Cooper. Discussion? Roll call.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister? Yes, six GAs, then it's passed.
Uh, do we have any visitors that would like to speak with city council this evening? All right, next on to committee reports, uh, Ms. I'm sorry, Ms. Dreher?
I do not have any, uh, reports on any committees.
All right, thank you.
I guess I do. We had a finance committee meeting and we are on a streak of just excellent meetings, one after another. Um. Uh, uh, Ms. Stefan, uh, addressed our credit card annual review and let us know that we had a fifty dollar, um, points check that we were able to apply to the general account, so that was nice to see. Uh, she also gave us a ClearGov presentation, which are budgeting software, something we required and makes the budgeting process much easier, and certainly I think it's a tool that we'll keep. Um, we also talked about municipal building renovations and Mister Hennessy talked about phase two, which is the basement. Um, we have a company by the name of Ceterin that will be doing the work, um, twenty percent below budget. Um, they were the lowest bidder and most of the, uh, construction going on will be, uh, I guess we could call cosmetic in nature as we talk about painting, light fixtures, ceiling, carpet, uh, and some, uh, bathroom updates. So that'll, uh, be a six-month project and I'll be, I know it'll be, uh, much, much appreciated by the, uh, staff. And then the, uh, um, we talked about construction administration inspection services. So there's two contractors, uh, that we are engaging. Um, for one for the streets program and then one for the, uh, Columbus Street parking lot. Uh, D L Z, who we've had a relationship for a couple of years now and does excellent work, is ready to begin. So council, I believe we will be asked tonight, uh, to look to pass and approve that contract so they can begin work. Um, environmental design group will be handling the Columbus Street parking lot and that'll be a three-month, um, project, uh, planned for September through November. Uh, also, uh, also I, I miss Miss Odebrasky for, uh, providing some information on that, uh, on that work as well. So thank you for doing that. Uh, and then we went through our, our usual bank-to-book reconciliation comparison reports and, um, income tax collected. And happy to see that, uh, you know, the money that we are, are holding is increasing or, uh, collecting is increasing and, uh, the, the, uh, city's in a very healthy position. So. Thank you for the information. And that's all here.
Thank you, Mister Grumney. Mister Capel?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Mrs. Cooper?
Yes, we had an events commemoration meeting yesterday evening and it was a full meeting. Um, we talked a little bit about the Fourth of July, but that's been through a couple of times now. Um, the only thing that they're really trying to still decide is they're, they're really considering eliminating more parking on the square only during the parade route. Um, and but we're really trying to get business feedback from that instead of just going out and doing it. So they have, I think, one more business that they're trying to coordinate with. Um, but that's basically for safety reasons to, so that the, we're not blocking, the cars aren't blocking, um, people aren't getting in between the cars and for the parade. Uh, we talked about just a tiny bit of that Patriots Memorial Project that we're going to be doing. Um, there's going to be a big board, uh, that's going to help select the memorial project that's going to be chosen and someone from Sunbury gets to be on that committee. So right now, um, Damon is temporarily that guy. Um, he's going to check, they're going to check the commitment on that, um, but might, might be Damon, which would be great. Um. We have had, we talked about the event permit policy. We think we, this was developed maybe two and a half years ago, so it's, we've been going at it for about two and a half years. Staff has seen some things like, oh, we could probably tweak this. And as the permits come through the committee, we're like, oh, um, this was a great start, let's go back and edit. So that came through with some edits that will be coming to council because council approved the permit policy originally, um, but it's not coming just yet. It's going to go through events one more time. Uh. We talked about Sunbury Sizzle and Sound. This is the first time that it was brought to the events committee. And we had a representative from the Big Walnut Civic Association here. She intends to be here for Parks and Rec and she will also be here for a council meeting so that there should be plenty of opportunity and time to talk with them. They, similar to the Fourth of July, the Civic has had a working group that they've been working with a police representative, a fire representative, Amber Daryl, um, and some changes are they intend to open up the entire quadrant over here for the Beer Garden. Last year, they only had a portion of it. This year, they intend to open the whole quadrant. They intend to have chairs. There's very specific which chairs are allowed, which chairs are not allowed. They have safety plans in place. They also intend to hire their own security firm to help. So they will still be asking for volunteers to pour beer and sell tickets, uh, but they won't be having volunteers at the gate anymore. That's going to be a hired firm. Um, that's so, and there's going to be some more activities for like the under-five crowd, I would say, or under-ten crowd, uh, um, they're adding more, they're, they're removing the flea market stuff. So some changes, um, if you have any questions, you can reach out to me, Mister Hennessy, um, and, and we'll get you right away. Uh, Labor Day Market was also here. They had a representative from Kiwanis. They come every year and no changes. Um. She was, she was funny because she said, no alcohol, we don't need anything, you know, so, no, same thing there. And then we're at the very beginning of talking about the America two hundred and fifty celebration in Sunbury. Is that on our agenda for?
At next meeting.
Okay, so that'll be coming forward to council. There's some, that'll, that'll be coming to council so that there's a resol, is it a resolution that we can pass and that will open up a lockbox of some gr, grant funding and stuff that we can get to help our residents celebrate? So it was a good meeting. It was, it was, um, a longer one for us, so. Thank, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Mister Ghost?
No report, sir.
Um, zoning meeting for this month is canceled due to lack of agenda items. Next item on the agenda is the police report. Sergeant Meacham.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, the latest update on cruisers is we actually have our second one here in the city. It's currently at Sure Signs being striped. Uh, once they're done over there, we'll have, uh, two of them in service. Uh, this past weekend, we had a incident on the square, um, Friday evening involving a stolen vehicle where our officers, um, apprehended a individual. Uh, we were notified by the Columbus Police, uh, the stolen vehicle possibly entered our jurisdiction. It, uh, hit off our flock camera down the road. Our officers, um, initiated a traffic stop. The young man failed to comply, ended up striking the Myers Inn here. Um, after the traffic stop was attempted there at the U D F. So it was a short, brief. Um. Not even really a pursuit, however, um, there was obviously some damage, as you all sure have seen, to the Myers Inn. Um, no injuries out of the incident though, which we're thankful of. No damage to any cruisers. Uh, Saturday on the square, they had a, an event for the nationwide protests that occurred. There was no incidents or any issues out of that. Uh, training wise, our S R officers attended a two-day class for, uh, their S R O, um. It's called Ohio School Safety Summit, was in Columbus. Officer Lawbacher also attended a week-long training last week. Um, it's Ohio Tactical Officer Association Training. It's in relation to his, uh, position on the Delaware Tactical Unit. Um, other than that, there's nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Update. Any questions, uh, or comments for Sergeant Meacham? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, Mister Hennessy will give the administrator report.
So I, yeah, I just want to call out two items that are in the report. The first one is, uh, city signage. We've talked, I think, a little bit about this, uh, last year when we were doing the building renovations, uh, that we would then, at some point, as you can imagine, I mean, the, the, the signage that's in front of our buildings at the moment, a little dated. Uh, so this is a request for qualifications to seek a design consultant to assist, uh, in designing, fabricating and installing. We're going to first focus on the, the entry signs to the city. So, you know, I think there are four of them out there. So design work on those, uh, design work related to the buildings, um, because just again, make sure we get our, our building signage updated. And then we've talked a little bit about parks as well. Try to get something consistent i, uh, in our parks. So, so that's the primary focus of phase one and then phase two, uh, will be to begin to, to, that discussion about wayfinding signage, um, in the community as well. So, uh, those, uh, requests for qualifications are due here in about a week. So. Clo, getting closer to that. And then the other thing I wanted to call out, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, uh, they've established a new regional economic development academy. Uh, it's really designed toward non-economic development professionals, really those people who sit on boards and commissions that are from time to time asked to ask, act on TIFs, C R As, Joint Economic Development District or Joint, uh, uh, yeah, Joint Economic Development District, what have you. Um, so if you're interested, I am going to, was going to offer this up to members of our planning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, council members as well. If you're interested in participating, let me know. I can get you the information. Um, it is a, a fairly significant commitment of time. There'll be six courses. You don't have to attend all six of them. Uh, but each of them is a four-hour course and the, uh, the window of training is between August seventh and the end of the calendar year. So if that sounds like something that might be interesting to you, let me know and I'll.
Are they in person, Daryl?
They are, yes.
At the Morpsey?
Yeah, at the Morpsey, yeah, the facility, yeah. And that is it, unless anybody's got any questions for me.
Right. Just for clarification, I think we have seven or eight, uh, welcome signs to Sunbury.
Oh, do we have that many entry signs? Oh.
Yep.
I guess I need to.
I didn't name them off. I think my mom was like, oh, they're all over the place.
I guess I need to drive into the town in more directions. Came out all the time.
My mom's probably watching the meeting right now, so. All right, good deal. Ms. Odebrasky, the engineers report.
All right, just two brief updates that then I'll take questions. For the Walnut Street stabilization, if you haven't noticed, it continues to rain here. However, we're about to have some dry weather over the next week. If you recall, we are waiting to do some compaction testing on the road. Rain is the enemy in this case. So with this dry weather, uh, I've spoken to Ironsite, the contractor, and they will be looking at it around this time next week to see if compaction testing will work and then we can move forward with paving. If it doesn't, we'll move on to next steps, which will include looking at a way to stabilize the road without, uh, drying it out. So definitely cross your fingers for hot, dry weather over the next seven days. And then I included the same pictures that I shared last time, just as a reminder, we do have that public meeting next week for the S R thirty-seven widening project. Uh, notifications have gone out. We will definitely send out some additional, um, outreach on social media. The event will be on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, from five P M. to seven P M. on the first floor of this building. There will be people greeting, uh, residents, uh, and then helping direct them to different stations that have all of the information. Um, ODOT will be in attendance, uh, as many city, city staff members as I can convince to go and, uh, also American Structure Point, the design consultants. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions, comments? Good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, resolutions, third reading, resolution number twenty twenty-five dot one-two. A resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement. The Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District make a motion.
Second.
Second by Mister Grumney. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister? Yes, Mister Capel?
Yes.
Six GAs, motion passes.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dot one-three, a third reading, resolution establishing a special revenue fund. I'll make a motion.
Again.
Second by Mister Grumney. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Dreher?
Yes, Mister Capel?
Yes.
Seven GAs or six GAs, motion passes.
No second readings of resolutions. Uh, we're on the first readings, resolution number twenty twenty-five dot one-four. A resolution awarding the contract for the Sunbury Municipal Building Renovations Lower Level Project to Settle and Building Company. That is a reading only. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dot one-five, a resolution approving construction administration and inspection services with D L Z relating to the twenty twenty-five street improvement program. And we are looking for passage of this. This was referred to in our uh, finance committee meeting. Basically, we want the inspectors to be there as, uh, the paving program gets underway. We're looking for a suspension of the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Got a motion by Mister Capel to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Cooper. Discussion? Roll call.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Dreher?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Six GAs, motion passes.
Motion on resolution number twenty twenty-five dot one-five.
Got a motion on the resolution?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Cooper. Discussion? Roll call.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Dreher?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Six GAs, motion passes.
All right. Uh, starting first readings, resolution number twenty twenty-five dot one-six. A resolution approving construction administration and inspection services with environmental design group relating to the Columbus Street parking lot improvements. Look, it's a reading only, um, and this is due to the work, uh, not happening until September. A resolution number twenty twenty-five dot one-seven, again, a first reading. Resolution accepting a grant award from the Ohio Department of Development for updates to the Sunbury zoning code, approving the required matching funds and authorizing the city administrator to execute all necessary documents. Again, reading only. We are on to ordinances, third reading ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot one-eight. Uh, this ordinance is going to remain tabled. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot one-nine. Do I have to read it? Um, and then table? What, what do you recommend here?
Go ahead and get your reading in.
Let's get the reading in. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot one-nine, an ordinance creating the Woodland Lake Tax Increment Financing Incentive Districts, declaring improvements to the parcels within the incentive districts to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation. Requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax and permit equivalent fund for the deposit of the service payments and specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive districts and declaring an emergency. I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Cooper. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister Dreher?
Yes.
Yes.
Six GAs, motion passes.
All right, next item on the agenda, second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot two-one, an ordinance authorizing ex execution of a development agreement between Romanelli Schrock Road Investments LLC and D R Horton Indiana LLC and the City of Sunbury declaring an emergency. You may recall, last meeting, we had a first reading, Mister Olin from Romanelli and Hughes, uh, was here. Um, and now we have, uh, some, for D R Horton, if you can come up, introduce yourself and, uh, looks like you're looking for this to be passed this, uh, this evening.
Yes, I'm Dave Dozer with D R Horton. We're excited to start the Kitten Crossing project. Uh, the reason for the emergency is we are trying to get pavement done this November. Um, this is the last item we need to close with Vince. That would happen next week. Savco is ready. Uh, we've had a pre-con on five twenty-eight. Uh, and this is a large first section. We have to do a hundred percent of the storm and about ninety percent of, or a hundred percent of the sanitary and ninety percent of the storm due to the sanitary and basin beyond the west side of the site. So there's a lot of work to get done. We would love to have pavement done by Thanksgiving and start building December. So that's every week counts right now with the weather. June, July and August is prime construction season. So we're, uh, requesting that we can uh, get passage and start hopefully next week, um, on the site.
A key component of this development agreement is, uh, the developer funding a, a retrofit upgrade for Cheshire Road lift stations. Is that correct?
Yep, that's, that's a big part of it. It also includes, uh, uh, what will be an extension of the Little Walnut Creek Interceptor through their property that will connect to at some later point in time.
Got it. Any questions? All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Second by Mister Ghost. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Dreher?
I'm staying.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Five GAs, motion passes.
Got a motion on the emergency, myself.
I'll second.
Second by Mister Ghost. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreher?
I'm staying.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Five GAs, motion passes.
Next item is, I will make a motion on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot two-one.
Second. Second by Mister Ghost.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mister Dreher?
I'm staying.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Five GAs, motion passes.
All right, good deal. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. All right, next item on the agenda, second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot two-two. An ordinance approving the final plat for Eagle Creek subdivision, section two, and declaring an emergency. This is reading only. And, uh, second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot two-three. An ordinance approving proposed amendments to the City of Sunbury, Ohio Charter as recommended by the Charter Review Commission and directing the clerk of counsel to certify the same to the Delaware County Board of Elections for placement of the question of the charter amendments upon the November fourth, twenty twenty-five general election ballot to be submitted to the city's electors for final review and approval. Reading only. No first readings? In, moving on, unfinished business? I'm, I wanted to cover, um, initially House Bill three thirty-five. Um, it's, if you haven't heard of it, you're probably like the majority of the public, and the reason is, is this bill was just introduced in the House, um, on June fourth. Um, if you have heard of it, you may be a little bit confused as to what the ramifications are for both taxpayers, local entities, who's included, who's not included, and what portion of your tax bill they're actually targeting um, with this particular bill. And when I say they, the, uh, the bill sponsor, at this point, it appears that the Ways and Means Committee um, is tracking towards passage in the very near term. Um, for a bill that's this substantial, it's really unprecedented that you know, the House would try to, um, get this approved in such a short timeframe with such little time for the public to understand what the ramifications are. But I did draft comments specific to House Bill thirty, three thirty-five, and I welcome, um, your input and questions afterwards. Um, so council colleagues, I believe we can all agree on this fundamental principle that property tax reform is necessary. I'm really going to focus on the municipal side of things. Um, and I'll hit on some of the other entities that it, uh, that affects. And for those who don't know, municipality is either a village or a city. As fiduciaries, each of us bears a serious responsibility to steward the city's finances, not only for today, but for generations to come. Our legal and ethical obligation is clear. We need to act in the best interest of Sunbury's residents with transparency and fiscal foresight. On Tuesday, June tenth, that was a week ago, I was made aware of House Bill three thirty-five for the first time. It's legislation that proposes the elimination of inside village for municipalities, counties and school districts. Notably, this bill exempts townships and its application is far from equal, despite the claims to the contrary by its sponsors. Let me be clear. This is a reactive measure to property value inflation and not thoughtful tax reform. House Bill three thirty-five was introduced on June fourth, two weeks ago. Received a single hearing last week in the Ways and Means Committee and another one today. And out of the fifty-two, uh, pieces of testimony that were submitted for this bill, one was a proponent, in other words, for the bill. Three were interested parties. And the other forty-eight, um, and maybe my math doesn't add up, but forty-eight organizations were opposed, uh, to the bill. It is now being positioned for the inclusion in the biennial budget bill, which must be passed by June thirtieth under our state constitution. If enacted, it would take effect January first, twenty twenty-six. At this pace, there is no room for meaningful public input, no analysis for the long-term impacts and no opportunity for local governments to plan. This is not reform. It is a rushed amputation of a deeply interwoven and broken system. This legislation would shift the burden squarely onto local communities, stripping us, elected officials of local communities, of a revenue source without any corresponding relief. The hypocrisy is blatant. The state is not giving up eleven percent of their revenue. They're not returning eleven percent of your income or sales tax, nor are they cutting eleven percent from their own budget. Instead, they are shifting the impact onto local services, local governments and local taxpayers, all under the guise of relief. So let's talk about what this means for Sunbury. House Bill three thirty-five would reduce the city's revenue by eleven point four percent, approximately eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. And that, this is not a planning document, but I need to provide this for perspective. Um. But it's something you should consider, the equivalent, just for context. Eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually, that's the equivalent of seven police officers when you include wages and benefits. It's seventeen point four percent of our total personnel expenses. It's eighty-seven percent of our street improvement program. It's sixteen and a half percent of our annual capital investments and it's thirty percent each year of projected improvements at J R Smith Park. In other words, this revenue could have been utilized if they strip it away to pay for J R Smith Park out of cash in three and a half years. Instead, you may be forced to reconsider that project as a whole. Now let's compare that to the benefit for a typical homeowner. It's going to be a reduction between two to five percent. So again, um, the city's budget goes down by eleven, eleven point four percent. But the benefit to the taxpayer is between two and five percent. And really, the two percent is if you live in a type-two annexation area like Price Ponds or Rolling Hills, where you're still paying taxes to the township, that millage is split. Again, they aren't talking about impacting townships. And if you don't live in a type-two annexation area like Sunbury Estates, Historic Downtown, Gardens, anywhere really outside of Price Ponds, Rolling Hills and that side of town, um, it would be about a five percent reduction in your total tax bill. Between forty-five cents and eighty cents per day, um, on average. And that's just between our households, because I looked up each one of our own. Uh, for me, it's a sixty cent per day, uh, reduction in taxes at the expense of an eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar loss to the city in terms of revenue. That revenue pays for essential services. So I ask you this, is it worth it? The legislation is opposed by a broad bipartisan coalition, and these are just the ones that are on record as of today. The County Auditors Association of Ohio, the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, the Ohio Police Chiefs Association, Ohio State Association of County Veteran Officers, the Ohio Municipal League, the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, Ohio School Boards Association, Ohio Associations of School Business Officials, and many more that are working formally oppose this bill, but most likely are just learning about it because of the lack of transparency. These groups are not fringe groups. They're organizations that work daily to support safety, education, infrastructure and the basic functioning of local government. I support property tax reform, and I believe you do too, when it's done responsibly, with the input from those it affects and phased in to allow local governments to adjust. Radical shifts in tax policy like this one threaten the stability of our communities and the services are re, are. Radical shifts in tax policy like this one threaten the stability of our communities and the services our re- our residents depend on. The bill does not represent leadership. It's a knee-jerk response to inflation and political pressure. The consequences fall not in the state house, but here in Sunbury and Galena and Big Walnut and many other communities like ours. So what do I propose? If council believes that Sunbury should reduce or eliminate inside millage. I encourage you to take a thoughtful approach to tax reform, conduct a thorough analysis of where you're going to make those cuts. Gather resident feedback. If the residents desire or demand change, which I have not heard. Uh, craft local legislation that responsibly phases in the changes over time. That protects the services our residents value and rely on. I won't stand by idle while the state attempts to take that decision away from us. Thank you for your thoughtful attention and continued commitment to responsible governance. So again, I learned about this last week. I spoke with, um, first our lobbyist and Daryl. Ryan McLean, Mayor Cannell, the county administrator. Um, several other elected officials, this was all between Wednesday and Thursday. By Friday, um, Mayor Cannell, myself, Ryan McLean, Alice Nix. Uh, we're planning to meet with Beth Lear because number one, she's on the Ways and Means Committee and she's in the House of Representatives. And at least from the appearance of it supports this bill as is. And we wanted to meet with her, uh, to share the impact, again. First, I wish I could have had all of you updated. This is not the speed at which the state house normally works, especially with this dramatic of a change. I can tell you, I, I've never seen this. And, and honestly, what it looks like is they're trying to slip it in. Slip it into a budget without much public testimony, um, all in the spirit of radical tax reform. And it's responsive, it's a responsive reaction to inflation that we saw this coming. We saw tax rates, like, we're going to go up through the triennial increase. Everybody knew that. And they waited until it was too late, and now they're trying to shove it. Down in local communities' throats, and that's, that's, uh, where we are now. So we met with Representative Lear. Um, at least at that point, I felt like our strong, or sorry, our extreme fallback position in terms of, okay, what? What could be acquiesced to, um, is, okay, if you're going to do this, phase it in over a five-year period. We talked about a couple of different approaches to that. One is, you know, over a five-year period, as revenues are going down, the state backfills some of that revenue. The other option is just over a five-year period, you reduce it by twenty percent, and after five years, the inside millage is gone. We also, like, my personal position is, if you're going to do it to municipalities, counties and, um, school boards. You need to do it to townships too, and you need to, like, get, if you feel like their. Tax structure is so diametrically different than municipalities, then fix that. Give them the tools, like the ability to levy an income tax or whatever. But this is a knee-jerk reaction, the real impact, at least from the testimony that I was able to hear today. Um, is there's going to be significant impact, uh, right away. You know, thankfully, Sunbury. And I'll just say for Big Walnut generally are in good cash positions, thank goodness. Um, but when I was looking at the budget software that we have, I mean, we're, if this passes, we're going to take, have to take a very hard look at. Our capital investments, our personal expense, our hiring practices, um, raises, all of that. Uh, because you don't just cut eleven percent of your budget in a growing community, um, without there being cut somewhere. So that, that's my position. I'll open it up for comments or questions.
Um, thanks for your comments, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that, very well taken. I just heard about this last night. Um, haven't educated myself on it yet, but we'll be doing so. Um, one question, eight hundred, eight hundred and seventy thousand number, that eleven percent, is that definitive?
Yeah, so, so that number came to us from the county. So now in our budget, I think we have it more like eight hundred thousand, but this, this is the county's estimate of the impact for us. And I mean, I think it's definitely, it, it order of magnitude, I think it's, it's pretty darn close.
And if I heard you correctly, this would be effective on the first of the year, so they're tracking towards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for briefing all of us. I think you're on track. I too have not read the bill. I am where this was coming up. My question is, is there anything in there where they're going to replace the funds?
No. They've been pretty adamant about that. I mean, very adamant about it. They, they, actually, in the testimony today, I heard. Um, there's, there's, one, one of the proponents of this bill is saying, like, you can't. Can't shift taxes, which I generally agree with. Like, it's, you can't really, like, say, rob Peter to pay Paul. I mean, we've done that too long in the cut, history of our country, right? Like, yeah, we're going to cut taxes here, but then it shifts here. No, they are not looking to backfill with any state or other sources or afford. Municipalities with other tools to, uh, recover that revenue. The answer that they, that the representatives I'm hearing on the Ways and Means Committee, the specific points is. If the community demands it, they will put a levy on the ballot and. Yeah, let them fight it out. That's honestly what they're saying right now.
Is there a phasing proposal that anyone's discussed in committee at all?
No.
Over three, five years.
No. I mean, there, there's all different types of strategies, and I'm not going to get into all of them. You know, there could be a look-back freeze, so the increase that just went into place, you know. Could they work with county auditors to do a retroactive triennial? Uh, calculation, could you take, instead of the peak year of the three-year triennial increase, you take an average of the three, so if it increases by ten, ten, ten. You're taking like, you know, fifteen percent versus thirty, like, those are approaches, but. No, I, there, there's a slogan that's been pushed by, uh, Leader Huffman out of Lima, he's the head of the House, and it's, um. Don't quote me on the exact, but it's like, we need immediate and radical change. This is. This will be immediate and radical. I just never thought it was going to come from. The Conservative Party, honestly, I didn't.
Position, do we know?
Uh, he's been mute so far. Um, but I've, based on, I mean, you, if you read some of the documentation that was in front of you tonight, and if you haven't, take it. I just included two news stories from municipalities that passed resolutions in opposition to this. City of Lima, these just popped up on my newsfeed because I've been searching HB three, three, five over the past week. And the city of Westerville specifically passed a resolution last night. And they included Lieutenant Governor, uh, Jim Tressel and DeWine and the heads of the House, heads of the Senate. Um, you know, that's a consideration. I wanted to get the pulse of this group first to see if that's something we would like to do. Um, if we don't have to do it, I think our representatives and senators know where we stand. I don't know that it's going to make. A difference, truthfully.
I, I'd just like to say, first of all, I appreciate you speaking and, uh, supporting the community. I think from a larger view, a bigger perspective than just an individual perspective and, uh. Um, I, I do think it's important, even though, you know, you fight the fight because it's right and, and, uh. I, I actually do have some comments I'd like to, to share, won't be nearly as cohesive or elegant as you just spoke, because I kind, as you can tell, I just kind of wrote mine down in a complete chicken scratch.
Can you read it, John?
Uh, probably not. I'll try with these, though. Um, but I do want to kind of speak, not only as a council member. A red, a longtime resident and as a taxpayer, I, I can see as an individual, the, the attractiveness. Initial attractiveness of this, of this, uh, legislation, you know, you can reduce my taxes, sign me up. Who doesn't want less? You know, less taxes taken out. Um, however, thi- this is, this is long-term thinking versus short-term fix. And, um, I, I just think, you know, thi- this is just not the right pa- path to, to handle it. Um, I think this case is different. This is more about the greater good of the community and not about the individual. I think the mayor laid out very well. The individual gain versus the community loss of something like this were to go forward. And I just want to make a few points in no particular order. Um. I, I really wish and had hoped that there'd be a partnership from our elected officials when, with something with this type of impact, that we would have. Uh, some conversations, some input and ability to, to talk about alternatives. Uh, basically than what I see as a push for a headline grabber. And, uh, uh, it's disappointing, um, that the city and the school district, for that matter, didn't get an opportunity to, to provide input. Um, we, the city, residents and, and council have been put in a very awkward and unfair position to defend ourselves. Um, and, and to try to maintain funds that are used directly to, for the operations of this city and, and what in turn benefits all our residents. Uh, things like parks, police, roads, waste, uh, roads, wastewater, um, you know, it, that is something for all. Um, you know, I myself have seen my property taxes increased by approximately thirty percent since I moved here. Um, but I've also seen my property value increase a hundred percent. Um, and my fear is, is you start taking away services like roads. Uh, like safety and police and, and services and parks. I think we're going to find a reduction in our, our, uh, res- in our, um. Uh, property tax because the value of our homes are going to decrease, because the value of Sunbury is going to decrease. And I think it's very short-sighted to try to get what I just call a, a quick fix. Um, and I know the mayor didn't say it, and no one else has said that, I, 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 I'm going to say and say, I feel like it's a bit of a, a tension grabber. Um, to, to try to earn some, uh, popularity, and I don't think that is what we should be doing as elected officials. We should be looking at the fiduciary responsibility, the long-term view of the health of this city and what's best for our residents. And this clearly, I believe, goes against that. Um, so I would actually encourage any residents listening to this, that may listen to this, to reach out to your representatives. Um, voice your concern as what this means, it needs you educate yourself, as I continue to educate myself. Um, this bill has a lot to it and, uh, and fundamentally is not good for the city and, in my opinion. Uh, the residents either. So again, I encourage city participation in something like this, uh, and, uh. And hope that we have a say and, and can change course in this in a very short amount of time, but thank you for letting me speak and.
Thank you.
Trust, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Right, we got a new and unfinished business. Mr. Air?
I do have one item that I thought I would mention. Earlier tonight, we spoke about event permits. I really hope it's in our bylaws that if a planned group. Uh, or if a group is planning on using our square for a protest, that they too have to get an event permit. And I also believe that if they cause any type of assault on a police person. Policewoman or policeman, their cruisers, any individual, any resident of this area. And anybody's personal property, I think swift consequences should be in place. Um, I'm all for freedom of speech, but if it's, I've had people call me concerned about their cars and their property. And, uh, I think if this is an organized event, then they should have to have an event permit as well. And if we have to have extra police officers, extra security, then they need to pay for it.
Very specific event you're referring to?
The, the Mo Kings protest, if, that they, people know this is going to cause angst. And that's, that's fine, that, that, it was, uh, peaceful, it's uneventful, but. Like I said, I had people call me concerned about their automobiles and their property. I think something like this, it was a planned event, if they want to use our square. Just like if anybody needs to use the square for, for setting up tables to sell items. I think they should need to get an event permit. And, and when something like that is going to cause some angst. If there's extra police protection that's needed, I don't feel, uh, I, I feel they should. Pay for it, and if anything does happen, if any assaults or damage to anybody's property, there needs to be swift consequences in line.
I don't have anything additional. Thank you.
Thank you. You pop?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooper, Mr. Ghost?
Did you want, you want to say about Dave?
Please, yeah.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm looking back. Um, I went to visit Mr. Martin and he's doing really good. He might be watching now. We helped him, uh, set up his YouTube so he could watch. And really, I think, um, he's healing well, uh, Mr. St. John went with me. He, um, is healing very well. His spirits were very high. I was telling Mr. Grimney, he, uh, Dave had a, a trip planned to Ireland this fall, and he had to cancel that, and he said, I'm going next year. So I know Mrs. Crawford has been to see him, and he said lots of folks have been in to see him and. Did you have anything? I mean, just, I, I think he was doing really well, and he's, he's taking the time to heal, but he's ready to come back.
Yeah, I think the most encouraging thing is his spirits are very high.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, that's so meaningful. I mean, he's just, despite the health issues that he's going through. Man, it's just uplifting to see, you know, he's in the lion's den and he's calm and collected and very, uh. Lion's Den is a very bad reference. I was talking about Daniel in the. This is a very bad reference. Sorry. Especially with the next door drama from a year or two ago.
And, uh, it was our Smith.
Yeah, let's just say he's, his spirits are hot, Mike.
Exactly the same as he always is, I think. Um, it, he was good, and he just says hi to everybody, and it was good to see him.
Very good.
If he's watching, we miss you, Dave. We miss you, Dave.
Good deal. Alright. Anything else? Alright, next item, or on the agenda is our regular scheduled meeting, July second, twenty twenty five. We'll see you back here.
And we'll be, I'll be absent.
Okay, good deal. Anyone else absent that day? Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second by Mr. Ghost, discussion. Yes.
Mr. Ghost?
Yes.
Mr. Grimney?
Yeah.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Air?